What's up Greg, how are you doing today?
Yeah.
Hey Brian.
Yeah.
Last time I saw you.
No, Africa for a month.
Then last time I ran into you.
I was a bank.
We had to go out of town.
At least gotta land or watch.
What's up? You can dress up too. Want to take a picture of that? Take a picture. I need to see my work. How do you go home and change? Yeah, I think I've seen this one before. Right? Yeah. Yeah, good evening everyone. We're gonna go ahead and start the pre-meeting at the County Commission. We're just gonna review the agenda, see if any commissioners have any questions about any items on the agenda. All right, we'll start with the pledge and then I'll read the ethics reminder. Does any commissioner have any questions about any item on the consent agenda?
Yeah, just for a point of information and just an explanation on, for the public, Article 46 Sales Tax Capital Fund Project Ordinance is under there on the schools. The one for AB Tech, just expat, just so people, you know, understand those, it's on the consent agenda.
Okay. Not for, not to vote on or anything like that, just want to... A little bit of explanation, a little bit, that sounds good. All right, anything else? All right, under good news, we have the WNC Diversity Engagement Coalition and Paula Mendez. Not yet. Soon, very soon. Don't go far, we'll get to it in a second. Will present this item and Alex McKnight will also present. All right, we have a public hearing regarding, a resolution regarding capital cost of school improvement and extension of deed of trust and Tim Flora will help present this item. We have a county manager's report from Mady Stone and our health director, health director Dr. Mullendorf will give an update during that time as well. All right, under new business, we will have a review of the proposed ambulance service fee increases and Jerry Vahan is here to help present that item. And following that, we've got several board appointments to discuss and including the formation, the reformation of the Buncombe County Library Advisory Board. And we've got appointments to the Asheville Board of Adjustments. One of those is an appointment to the city's Board of Adjustments, but it's the position that must live outside the city limits. So there's two positions and we will appoint one. And then we've got two vacancies on the county's Board of Adjustments and a number of applicants. MSD, one vacancy. And then seven vacancies on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. So we'll discuss all that when we get to it, but are there any initial questions about any of the items on the agenda?
So for the, can we entertain the idea of doing interviews for the Board of Adjustment for both the city and the county appointments?
So, my two cents would be to, there's only two appointment, two people for that, the Asheville Board of Adjustment. I'd just say vote on that. There's like eight for the County Board of Adjustment and I'd love to interview those.
Yeah, I think, I think it's such an important board and...
Turn your mic on.
It is on.
Get up next to it, Tim.
I just think it's really important to interview all of them because it's such an important board.
Why don't we, so there's a couple of different opinions about it, why don't we just take those questions up when we get to them and decide on the process? I tend to share your perspective on it, but let's talk about it and we'll get there and we'll decide which process to use for this. Any other questions? All right, so I think we're ready to begin the meeting, so Max, if you could start the introductory video, that would be great. Good evening and thank you all for joining us for the February 6, 2018, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Let us begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands as our nation, our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we come together for our County Commission meeting this evening, we are just a few days away from the start of the 2018 Winter Olympics, which will be held in Pyeongchang, South Korea. Whether you are a fan of the Winter Olympic sports or not, let us all take time to reflect on the purpose and the spirit of this historic gathering of talented and dedicated young people from across the world, to compete in their respective athletic fields while also promoting international cooperation and peaceful relations. In that same spirit, before we begin the business of our meeting this evening, let us have a moment of silence during which time people may offer a silent prayer or reflect on what we all can do as individuals to promote understanding and cooperation within our own diverse community here in Buncombe County. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And also before we begin the meeting this evening, I would like to acknowledge that we have with us this evening Representative Brian Turner, one of Buncombe County's three representatives in the North Carolina House of Representatives. Representative Turner, thank you for your service to us in our state capitol and thank you for being with us this evening. I would also like to give a few moments to County Commissioner Robert Presley to make an announcement.
I think it's coming up. Our newest member of Buncombe County residence, born this morning. My granddaughter, Avery Ruth Presley. And all of this is, I'm just so proud, my fourth one. Is this one of the reasons why I want to be a county commissioner? Is this is the future and this is what I'm working for. Thank y'all for allowing me to say that.
Congratulations.
You just went on Instagram.
All right, and thank you for being with us. If you have a cellphone, please mute it or turn it off. I'm gonna read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all County Commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there an item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board Member? Also, does any Board Member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board Members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that are voted on by the Board this evening." One item I neglected to mention when I reviewed the agenda is that following the discussion around Board appointments, we will take public comment on any matter, so anyone may speak to the County Commission at that time about any matters that have not been previously had a public comment session on them earlier in the meeting. And you'll have three minutes to address the Board at that time. Any public issues that are voted on by the Board will also have a separate public comment period for them when we take those matters up. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. And Commissioner Belcher requested that we get a little bit of additional information on the Article 46 Schools Tax Capital Fund Project Ordinances related to AB Tech. So, who could share some additional info on this?
Greg, he is real smart.
Greg, as you come up, what's in the report is on the Elm building, so you might just talk about what we're doing, what we're doing there on the Elm building. But for the public, for the public, it's in the consent agenda and they can see all the detail. I just wanted to give them a little more information.
Yeah, I really come to the presentation, ask questions and I'll answer them. But as far as Elm goes, we have $150,000 in that request. And that is to take care of some water intrusion issues. We're sealing the flue block, doing some roof work and trying to control the humidity in that building. As you know, it has a certain odor, we're trying to overcome that and just dry it out, basically, to preserve it until a decision is made on what to do with the Elm building. The other part of that capital request, originally AB Tech brought you a budget of $1.5 billion for a specific list of improvements to be made. It was handed to me and I took it out and I used a professional estimator and a design team and we came back with a budget amount of $3.9 million. So that, $2.4 million that's in there, as you requested, that is to basically complete the list that was originally given to me.
May I say something? I've worked with Greg Onness and Robert Presley and Alex, we've, as commissioners, been on the board. Greg's put a good deal together with us and we've had, we've had three trustees involved, Marian Rice, Joe Brum, and... So, one more, what's that one that I hear? Matt Kern. We're gonna try, all the commissioners, I want to tell all commissioners that sometime first of next month, I want to try to get all of yous together, plus all the trustees, that Greg can, I've talked to him and he can put something together that we all can see everything that's happening far as what's gonna happen at AB Tech. And, you know, right now, what he has planned is pretty awesome. All of us don't know exactly what's going on, but I want everybody to understand that AB Tech's gonna be brought up to a great standard and that's what we're looking for with the quarter cent sales tax.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, well, thank you and I appreciate their request to talk about it a little bit more. This is, it's important to take care of the buildings we have. It's, a lot of times we focus on the new buildings that we're working on and they get a lot of attention, but it's really important to take care of what we got. So, really appreciate everyone's work to put this together. All right, any other questions about the consent agenda? If not, would need a motion to approve?
No.
All right, we have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, next item is the WNC Diversity Engagement Coalition. Only an announcement chance. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for having us. This is my crew, people. Yeah, I'm so happy that everyone is here. My name is Paulina Mendez and I am the new Communications and Community Engagement Coordinator for the county, so going into week two. But for the past couple of years, I had the privilege of being the program coordinator for the WNC Diversity Engagement Coalition. For those of you who may not be familiar with the WNC Diversity Engagement Coalition, we are a network of organizations dedicated to increasing diversity, equity and inclusion and we bring people together to collectively support the professional development, engagement and inclusion of multicultural people in our community. So I do want to extend my gratitude to all of you who are investing in us and in turn investing in your employees for the county. One of the ways that, one of the programs that we have is our eight-week professional development series and it's a lot of hard work, it's a lot of relationship building and a lot of professional development. And I'm so excited to report that out of all, all of the Buncombe County employees that participated in the program graduated. And I have some of the graduates with me today, so I'd like to take a moment to recognize everyone. We've got Alex McKnight, George Hanna, Bernadette Conyers, Michelle Nelson, Demeska Thompson, Eric Barnes, Michelle Warren, Nadine Walker, and Sheila Hardy. I can't tell you how proud I am of all of them and how much they mean to me, but I do want to turn it over and let Alex and George say a few words.
Evening. I just want to take some time out to thank commissioners, everyone who's involved with this program. I think I speak myself in my class meetings when I say, this program's taught me many skills that I can use both in my professional life as well as personal. It's also made me more valuable as a Buncombe County employee, better serving citizens and also allowed us to create some relationships with other Buncombe County employees and Buncombe County resources that we might not have ever created on our own. So I just want to say thank you again.
I'm George Hanna and like Alex said, I thank you for giving us this opportunity. It was a special opportunity. We formed a sort of friendship, it was almost like a team building exercise that I'm not sure it was meant to be that, you know, it was more to teach us the diversity and we, Alex and I have become friends since then, Eric and I have become friends since then and I think all the rest of us, you know, we sat in the room and we talked about these, in the class we called them uncomfortable conversations because we were talking about diversity, but when I sat down and thought about it, they were actually comfortable conversations in an uncomfortable topic, I guess, is to me a better way to say it because I was comfortable with everyone that I was talking to. And kind of built up to it maybe throughout the classes, maybe unintentionally or maybe it was intentionally, Paulina did this on purpose. But we got to a place and it was easy to talk about these things that most people don't want to talk about because they're taboo or they're, whatever the case may be. And doing these classes helped us get to that point. And we talked about things that I think we can bring back to the county and make us better employees, but I also met department employees that I never would have met otherwise. Usually, I'm an IT guy, so I'm usually going in and fixing things and then getting out of the red. And that's, that's not establishing relationships, that's just putting out a fire and moving on to the next fire. These are folks that I'll be able to, next time I go to their desk, we'll be able to have a conversation about friends and family and what's going on in their life and I think that'll help us carry on as better employees as we go forward. And I'm gonna meet new people through them that they know better in their department, so they'll do the same thing with IT. And I think we'll also look at each other differently. Doesn't matter what color we are, doesn't matter what gender we are, none of those things matter, we're here as a team and I think that's what this class brings together, good team.
Thank you so much, I'm happy to be under the roof.
Thanks so much, congratulations to all of you. All right, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider a resolution regarding capital cost of school and deed of trust and Tim Flora will kick it off.
Thank you Chairman Newman, Vice Chair Commissioners. Tonight, we are, is the, if we can get that presentation up, there we go. So tonight, we're gonna begin the process of financing some school capital projects that you as a board have approved over the last three years. These are projects that have been recommended by the School Capital Fund Commission as part of the Article 39 Sales Tax Revenue Financing, or Sales Tax Revenue Projects that we have going out here. You have been, you have approved projects since 2016 to the, in 2016, 2017 and 2018 and you've approved the funding for these projects and we have been successfully, successfully have been able to use cash flow from that fund to pay for these projects. But we've got to the point where it's now time to go out to the markets to finance these projects and so we stretched that cash flow as far as we could. It has always been the plan since the beginning of this process that in order to stretch those dollars to meet all the capital needs of the local schools, that we were going to have to finance these projects. And so tonight is sort of the beginning of that process. And so with me tonight, I have Ty Wolford, who is Senior Vice President with Davenport. They are our financial advisors that the county has used for the last couple of years and people that we have relied upon to help us work through this process to make sure that our processes and procedures are as they should be and that we are making good, solid financial decisions in how we are moving forward with managing the cash flows and the funds from this fund. The issuance that we're, we'll be going at, we're going out to the capital market and so the projects that we'll be funding are about $60 million worth of, again, previously approved projects. And so here's just sort of a summary of some of the bigger projects. It's the Asheville High project that we've talked to you many times before about, the community high school, the Monford North Star Academy project and then sort of a sundry of other projects, LED replacements, some sustainability projects and then roofing and other sundry projects. And so Ty is going to sort of walk you through the process to help you, give you and the public sort of a better understanding of how, all the, all the different working components of this and then we'll be available to answer any questions that you might have following his presentation.
I'm sure I have this down. Thank you, Tim, and thank you to the commission for letting me be here today. As Tim said, my colleagues and I have been working with the county for the past couple of years. I've really focused in, in the past year, looking at capital projects and specifically on these school projects, making sure we had our ducks in a row, we had the planning process in place to go to the market and issue bonds to fund the projects that we're ready to spend. I'm gonna give a overview of the process, we're gonna go through the schedule, certainly we welcome any questions as we go through it. On page three here, some of the key items for the anticipated sale. We are anticipating issuing limited obligation bonds, which has been the county's historic method of issuing debt in the public markets. The specifics are that we will be issuing under the county's 2015 deed of trust, which was created to sell the 2015 limited obligation bonds. We are adding additional collateral to that package since we'll be adding debt to finance these projects. The specific collateral here will be the Monford North Star Academy and the Asheville High School. The, some of the key details of the issuance are listed in the next bullet. We are issuing via public sale and I'll spend a minute talking about that on the next slide. Our issuance date is picked for March of 2018. We'll be pricing in mid-March and closing by the end of March, which is when the funds will be available. The term of our issuance is 20 years. We've provided on the right-hand side of this slide, an estimated amortization of the principal amount of the bonds we'll be issuing. This is just an estimate, it'll move all the way up until we lock in our rates in mid-March. I will note that the estimated par amount here of 54.555 million is less than the project amount. That does not mean we're gonna be getting less money than we need, it's purely a function of the public markets and our current estimates assume we would be getting a slight premium for selling those bonds based off of investor preferences. So we will get the 60 million we need, we will be issuing a lesser par amount in order to accomplish that. And finally, on this bottom left-hand corner of the slide, we've listed the financing participants. We're working as the financial advisor, bond counsel Parker Poe will be covering the legal documents and legal approvals. I should note, which we'll cover in a minute as well, but tonight's really the first step in the process of the public hearing. The February 20th meeting that you all have will be the...
It's a lot of relationship building and a lot of professional development. And I'm so excited to report that out of all of the Buncombe County employees that participated in the program graduated. And I have some of the graduates with me today, so I'd like to take a moment to recognize everyone. We've got Alex McKnight, George Hanna, Bernadette Conyers, Michelle Nelson, Demeska Thompson, Eric Barnes, Michelle Warren, Nadine Walker, and Sheila Hardy. I can't tell you how proud I am of all of them and how much they mean to me, but I do want to turn it over and let Alex and George say a few words.
I just want to take some time out to thank commissioners, everyone who's involved with this program. I think I speak myself in my class when I say this program's taught me many skills that I can use both for my professional life as well as personal. It's also made me more valuable as a Buncombe County employee, better serving citizens, and also allowed us to create some relationships with other Buncombe County employees and Buncombe County resources that we might not have ever created on our own. So I just wanted to say thank you again.
I'm George Hanna, and like Alex said, I thank you for giving us this opportunity. It was a special opportunity. We formed a sort of friendship. It was almost like a team-building exercise that I'm not sure it was meant to be that. You know, it's more to teach us the diversity. We, Alex and I have become friends since then, Eric and I have become friends since then, and I think all the rest of us, you know, we sat in the room and we talked about these, in the class we called them uncomfortable conversations because we were talking about diversity, but when I sat down and thought about it, they were actually comfortable conversations in an uncomfortable topic, I guess is to me a better way to say it, because I was comfortable with everyone that I was talking to. And kind of built up to it maybe throughout the classes. Maybe unintentionally, or maybe it was intentionally, Paulina did this on purpose. But we got to a place, and it was easy to talk about these things that most people don't want to talk about because they're taboo or they're whatever the case may be. And doing these classes helped us get to that point. And we talked about things that I think we can bring back to the county and make us better employees. But I also met department employees that I never would have met otherwise. Usually, I'm an IT guy, so I'm usually going in and fixing things and then getting out of the red. And that's, that's not establishing relationships, that's just putting out a fire and moving on to the next fire. So these are folks that I'll be able to, next time I go to their desk, we'll be able to have a conversation about friends and family and what's going on in your life. And I think that'll help us carry on as better employees as we go forward. And I'm gonna meet new people through them that they know better in their department, so they'll do the same thing with IT. And I think we'll also look at each other differently. It doesn't matter what color we are, it doesn't matter what gender we are, none of those things matter. We're here as a team, and I think that's what this class brought to the other team.
Thank you so much. I'm happy to be under your roof.
Thanks so much. Congratulations to all of you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider a resolution regarding capital costs of school and deed of trust. And Tim Flora will kick it off.
Thank you Chairman Newman, Vice Chair Commissioners. Tonight, we are, is the, if we can get that presentation up there we go. So tonight we're gonna begin the process of financing some school capital projects that you as a board have approved over the last three years. These are projects that have been recommended by the School Capital Fund Commission as part of the Article 39 sales tax revenue financing, or sales tax revenue projects that we have going out here. You have been, you have approved projects since 2016 to the, in 2016, 2017, and 2018, and you've approved the funding for these projects. And we have been successfully, successfully have been able to use cash flow from that fund to pay for these projects. But we've got to the point where it's now time to go out to the markets to finance these projects. And so we stretched that cash flow as far as we could. It has always been the plan since the beginning of this process that in order to stretch those dollars to meet all the capital needs of the local schools, that we were going to have to finance these projects. And so tonight is sort of the beginning of that process. And so with me tonight, I have Ty Wolford, who is Senior Vice President with Davenport. They are our financial advisors that the county has used for the last couple of years and people that we have relied upon to help us work through this process to make sure that our processes and procedures are as they should be and that we are making good, solid financial decisions in how we are moving forward with managing the cash flows and the funds from this fund. The issuance that we're, we'll be going at, we're going out to the capital market. And so the projects that we'll be funding are about $60 million worth of, again, previously approved projects. And so here's just sort of a summary of some of the bigger projects. It's the Asheville High project that we've talked to you many times before about, the community high school, the Monfort North Star Academy project, and then sort of a summary of other projects, LED replacements, some sustainability projects, and then roofing and other sundry projects. And so Ty is going to sort of walk you through the process to help you, give you and the public sort of a better understanding of how, all the different working components of this. And then we'll be available to answer any questions that you might have following his presentation.
I'm sure I have this down. Thank you, Tim, and thank you to the commission for letting me be here today. As Tim said, my colleagues and I have been working with the county for the past couple of years. I've really focused in, in the past year, looking at capital projects and specifically on these school projects, making sure we had our ducks in a row, we had the planning process in place to go to the market and issue bonds to fund the projects that we're ready to spend. I'm gonna give an overview of the process we're gonna go through, the schedule. Certainly we welcome any questions as we go through it. On page three here, some of the key items for the anticipated sale. We are anticipating issuing limited obligation bonds, which has been the county's historic method of issuing debt in the public markets. The specifics are that we will be issuing under the county's 2015 deed of trust, which was created to sell the 2015 limited obligation bonds. We are adding additional collateral to that package since we'll be adding debt to finance these projects. The specific collateral here will be the Monfort North Star Academy and the Asheville High School. The, some of the key details of the issuance are listed in the next bullet. We are issuing via public sale, and I'll spend a minute talking about that on the next slide. Our issuance date is picked for March of 2018. We'll be pricing in mid-March and closing by the end of March, which is when the funds will be available. The term of our issuance is 20 years. We've provided on the right-hand side of this slide an estimated amortization of the principal amount of the bonds we'll be issuing. This is just an estimate. It'll move all the way up until we lock in our rates in mid-March. I will note that the estimated par amount here of 54.555 million is less than the project amount. That does not mean we're gonna be getting less money than we need. It's purely a function of the public markets, and our current estimates assume we would be getting a slight premium for selling those bonds based off of investor preferences. So we will get the 60 million we need. We will be issuing a lesser par amount in order to accomplish that. And finally, on this bottom-left-hand corner of the slide, we've listed the financing participants. We're working as the financial advisor, bond counsel Parker Poe will be covering the legal documents and legal approvals. I should note, which we'll cover in a minute as well, but tonight's really the first step in the process of the public hearing. The February 20th meeting that you all have will be the real action from the county board standpoint of approving the financing. So it's a two-step process in this approach. The underwriting team will be led by R.W. Baird. Wells Fargo will be co-manager, their counsel McGuire Woods, and trustee Regent Beckham. Just spent a minute about method of sale considerations. The two major avenues that were analyzed for this financing were a public offering versus a bank one. And certainly there is a place for both methods. In this case, for what we are anticipating issuing, the key determining factors that steer us towards a public sale are really the size, the term, the collateral structure, and then lastly, the interest rate. The interest rate is kind of based off of these other factors. The size, I'll just note, you know, we're gonna be in the 50 to 60 million dollar issuance range. Certainly can be difficult to get that amount of funding from a single bank. They tend to like smaller amounts. It's not to say that there isn't a bank willing to do that, but it's a smaller universe of banks that would be willing to fund that size alone. The term, we're looking for a 20-year fixed rate once again. There are banks willing to go out 20 years with a fixed rate. It's a smaller universe of banks, so it's not as good a fit with what we're trying to accomplish here. The collateral, we talked about a little bit. We're doing, we're utilizing a collateral package, which works well in the public markets. Banks tend to like a single piece of collateral. They don't like sharing collateral typically. And then the interest rates, I'll just note, we've had some very recent similar type of financings that we've reached out to our broad universe of banks, state, national, and regional banks. And based off of what we've seen for a 20-year fixed rate of project amount this size, the bank rates just have not been as efficient as the public market. The two data points we've seen in the last month, the bank, the best bank rates we've seen, one was 50 basis points worse than the public market estimate, the other was 100 basis points. And just to put that in perspective, with this loan, that would translate into depending 50 to 100 basis points, somewhere to the tune of 2.7 million to about 5.8, 2.8 to about 5.6 million of total additional payments you'd be making with that sort of a markup. So these factors have all steered us towards the public sale, which we feel pretty strongly will give us the best result. This next slide is really just for informational purposes. I just wanted to note, the county was upgraded to AAA by Moody's in the winter of 2016, so you now have AAA ratings from both Moody's and S&amp;P. Some folks like to ask, well, what's the benefit of that AAA? We've put some information together on this slide. The answer is it's a moving target. It depends on the market that day. But certainly since the financial crisis in 2008, investors have put a premium on credit quality. And so the difference between, say, a AAA and a double A credit rating, the average spread there has been 23 basis points since 2008. So like I talked about on the previous slide, that would translate, 10 basis points is about 570,000 of additional payments, 20 basis points is double that. So just trying to give you a little bit of a framework there for the benefit of having that AAA rating. And then lastly, a summary schedule here that Tim alluded to. One key step in the debt issuance process in North Carolina that I know you all are familiar with is the local government commission has to approve any debt financing, certainly of this magnitude. And that is a process that we've already started. It runs a parallel track with the walls approval process. We submitted an application to the LGC at the beginning of this month. We had a discussion with them. Based off LGC staff, they've given us the go-ahead to proceed. LGC is meeting on March 6th to consider approval of this financing. So the key steps we have is the public hearing today, the approval on February 20th, the LGC approval on March 6th. We'll be getting credit ratings along the process, and all of that will come together to allow us to access the public markets in mid-March and close on the financing by the end of the year. So happy to entertain any questions that might have.
So I just got a, just a comment. So there are a couple of reasons why, and you said this on repeat, and I guess some of what you said, just to nail it down, when you go to, when you go to the public market, these are very good performing loans, so investors want them, right?
That's correct.
So because the risk is lower, then the interest rate that the taxpayers pay is less.
That's correct.
And so because they are large in scale, 60 million, we're not able to reach out to the local banks for those. But on lower amounts, we may be able to, and they, you know, may be just as competitive as the public market. But in this size of a, of a, of an offering, you know, we have to go to the public market. But I also want to say that the detail on this is very good, Tim, and I appreciate the, bringing in the extra help to explain it. It does, it does help quite a bit.
Thank you.
And I have one thing to say. It's not really a question. What you're speaking about is Article 36 money. That's money that comes out of our seven cents of sales tax, and then it's not anymore tied into our property tax, something.
Right, this is Article 39 sales tax. By law, it is, it is specific to school capital funding. And so that flows through the School Capital Fund Commission, which then makes the recommendations based upon need from the two school systems to you, the county commissioners, and then you ultimately approve the projects that were recommended to you. But yes, it is a dedicated revenue strain that is outside of the general fund. It's its own specific fund.
Correct. I have one question. Could you say just a little bit more, I'll give you a little more detail about what collateral and security the county offers for the loan repayment?
Sure. So the structure of this financing is not too dissimilar from a mortgage, your home mortgage, where when you go to take a loan, you have the collateral to support the loan. And you need to have a certain level of collateral to get a certain dollar amount in your loan. In this stance, and it's fairly common in the public markets, there's a package of collateral and we, that is already existing, that was created in 2015 when that financing was done. And so the collateral was sufficient to support the financing at that time. Given we are borrowing more, and it's efficient to do it under the same package, we need to add some additional collateral to that so that the, that they, the ratio makes sense. And I'll note, specific in North Carolina especially, you can't just pledge collateral. You need to be financing improvements to that in order to pledge it. And so in this case, we're doing fairly substantial improvements to Asheville High and to Monfort, and so that's one of the reasons.
So it's the, it's the real estate on which the buildings sit that we're, that we're making the appearance to, or building new buildings on. It's that specific real estate?
It, it is. The buildings are already there. You're enhancing it or modifying, improving those facilities.
Okay, so it's just the collateral is real estate. Is the Article 39 revenue also collateral?
The revenue is not. That is how you all specifically pay for it. You've identified it for your budgetary purposes. The, you effectively have a promise to pay the debt service associated with the bonds. It's called a subject-to-appropriation pledge, and I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not gonna portray that I know all the specifics, but you are obligated to put it in your budget every year and to determine if, you know, those payments are made as part of the budget process every year.
Thank you. So we're not gonna vote on this this evening, but we're gonna have a public hearing. So I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing at 5:33. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment during the public hearing? Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Glad you got to see me again.
Me too.
Smile. I mean, it's a good time. You talk about money. Wells Fargo, I heard mentioned. They've been in the news more than any bank I know of for things that are not appropriate. So make sure you check into that. Whatever it is that they got their name on, you make sure that you're checking that out. Article 39 sales tax, hey, it's been around here in Buncombe County for years. It's the only one in the state that doesn't make it for this kind of money. And I think we have used it to the guilt, and we need to be going the other way. We used to be the dilapidated dozen. Now we're the 40, almost 50 buildings in Buncombe County and the city of Asheville. Now, that looks like mansions, not dilapidated. So there's a piece here that you need to hear. This is not just about brick and mortar. We have done this for 20 years, brick and mortar. The education of our children are suffering. They're having to go out into charter schools and other parochial schools and other home schools to get an education. So I'm bringing this point up because education is supposed to be one of the priority things, and brick and mortar should be secondary to that. Buncombe County's got enough brick and mortar. We need to educate. Now, the bond rating, I don't know why we're talking about bond rating. My God, we're proficient in getting money. The sales tax, if it goes down on Article 39 for, if it come to a bad time, we're gonna get a money to pay that bill. It's gonna be out of property tax. So that'd be a question I'd like to ask. Would sales tax go to revert to it if the sales tax wasn't there to pay the bill?
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right. Close the public hearing at 5:35. And, just a comment, Chairman?
Just to the point on the question about sales tax, it probably wouldn't be bad at some point in time to just have a historical information on sales tax to show, you know, through recessionary periods and such, you know, what it looks like, you know, the growth. Wouldn't be a bad thing to have in the future at some point.
And I will speak to that because actually, next Monday is our next School Capital Fund Commission meeting, and that is actually something we will be looking at is modeling that same, modeling through a recession to see what that would, what impact that would have on our financing.
I think it'd just be good to, you know, at some point in the commission meeting, just to show the historical data on, on the sales tax.
Also schedule for your work session next week.
Very good. Go ahead, thank you.
All right. And then the other question that, that was asked, so if the plan is to repay this using Article 39 funding, but what if the funds were not sufficient to do that? The county is committing to repay these funds, so we would drop on other financial resources?
I think we would be obligated to, yes, but I, I think really what, what we're doing in this situation is we have been using fund balance out of that fund to cash flow this. Now we're going to, once we do this financing, we're gonna reimburse ourselves the money that we've been using from the reserve. So there will be, there will always be a cushion now, you know, so if the economy takes, you know, down the return, I think we were able to sustain ourselves through those issues. Now what it, what it may impact would be future decisions that the School Capital Fund Commission may make on future projects. But I think probably as, as long, as far as the existing projects that we have already funded, I think we would be secure in maintaining those, those payments.
So we would look to the general fund, to the fund balance during this?
Well, no, we, what, what, the likelihood would happen is that we would cut back on the amount of projects that we would award in the future. I really think that the way we have been modeling it and what we're looking at is that the fund itself, the School Capital Commission fund itself, wouldn't be able to sustain any, any hits in the economy in the foreseeable future.
Just during, if we were, if we went into a bad recession, during that period, we may not be able to take on new projects. We would need to revenue, to some paying of debt.
Was it, in 2009, that was a great recession. How was that affected?
So in 2009, we didn't have the setup that we have now with the School Capital Fund Commission. It was just funds were allocated by average daily membership to the, to the different schools, and so it was done in a completely different process.
But the sales tax was still maintained?
The sales tax was maintained, but the schools had better, the schools had control of the projects that they were.
Right, but the income from the sales tax didn't go down because of, I mean, they were still able to carry on.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I, it, we would have to look. I mean, we did take, it, we did take a hit. It wasn't significant, but we did take a hit on.
It's part of the historical data. You'll see Tuesday, but I will say, and that's a policy decision that you'll be revisiting Tuesday, we're very conservative in estimating growth in sales tax for some of those risks.
Talking about bringing the money back in, the money that you've spent, how much do you think that we, I guess it's just money basically set aside. If we did have a problem, what kind of money are you talking about, Tim?
I would say that probably, gosh, I'd have to go back and look, but I mean, it would be, you know, probably 15, 20 million dollars that we would have. Because we get, I think that fund generates about 18 or 19 million dollars a year in revenue that we have coming in, so I mean, there's, there's constantly revenue flowing into that, into that fund as well.
But what you're talking more about and what you can put back to hold back, you're gonna have that set aside?
Yes.
If something did happen?
Yes.
So that, that gives us a little leverage.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks, everyone. All right, no vote required on this, so I think we're ready to move on to the next item, which is the county.
So Chairman and Commissioners, and Representative Turner can speak to this. North Carolina has a relatively unique relationship under, under general statute with their counties, where counties actually are arms of the state and deliver specific services on behalf of the state, and one of those is public health. And I do want to note that while most of the services provided in public health are mandated or framed essential under the law, I more want to say what a significant impact they have on each and every one of our lives every day. And I asked Dr. Mollendorf, who is our community's medical director, to speak to some of those, some of the, give you a status report around public health services, and also asked Letch Tobe to come, who is both your veteran services director, but also your preparedness director, who's responsible for ensuring as a community, we're prepared for both man-made and natural disasters. So I will note, Stoney Blevins is here, your HHS director.
Thank you, ma'am. So like she said, my name's Jennifer Mollendorf, I'm the medical director for Buncombe County Health and Human Services, and here to share a little bit about how public health is involved in preventing and responding to some of the common winter illnesses. So let's start with the illness that is probably at the top of everybody's mind, flu, right? So flu activity in North Carolina is widespread and remained widespread for the week ending January 27th, which is the most recent week for which data is available. And this season, the main strain of the virus that we're seeing circulate is influenza A, H3N2, and that is being seen in North Carolina as well as across the US. And when we see that strain, as public health officials, we get worried because that is one of the more severe strains we have. And during those seasons when H3N2 is dominant, we see more severe illness, more hospitalizations, and more deaths. And typically, the hardest hit are gonna be our older adults, so 65 years of age and older, and our young children. And so this is some data that has come from the state. Again, it's, flu cases are not reportable to local public health, but flu-associated deaths are. And then we share that information with the state, who then passes that up to the CDC. And so from the beginning of the flu season, which was October 1st of 2017, through the weekend in January 27th, there were 95 total flu-associated deaths in North Carolina. Three of those were children in the 5 to 17 years of age range, and 63 of those were older adults. Again, seeing that the impact of this strain of flu tends to be on older adults. Locally, as of today, in Buncombe County, we've had eight flu-associated deaths. All were in adults fifty years of age and older. And we're able to capture data that I, I think is more, what I hear from providers, like, were those people immunized? Did they have underlying health conditions? So I can speak to that for our residents. So five of those deaths occurred in people who were not immunized. And five of those deaths occurred in people who had underlying medical conditions. So again, we, we see the, the age puts you at higher risk, being an older adult and then having an underlying health condition puts you at risk. Last season, H3N2 was also the main strain that was circulating. And at the end of that flu season, there were two hundred and nineteen deaths in North Carolina, including seven children. And over a hundred and fifty of those deaths were in older adults. We had thirteen deaths in Buckham County last season. So we're kind of on track to have a repeat of last year. And I, again, to get back at the immunization point, typical, typically in, in prior years, almost eighty-five percent of flu-associated deaths in children were in kids who were unvaccinated, which goes to like, we're not using our number one tool in the fight against flu. We're not getting people immunized. And so that is our number one goal in public health, right? Our, our number one goal is prevention. And so the one way, the number one way we do that is through encouraging immunization. At Buckham County Health and Human Services, we've given out over sixteen hundred flu shots this season, which is comparable to where we were last year. And then we communicate, but you know, we are pushing messages out prior to flu season, during flu season to the public, encouraging vaccination, encourage the health habits to prevent contracting flu and prevent spread. Sharing information with local healthcare providers about how to, you know, diagnose, how to, how to manage flu cases. We get updates from the state on a regular basis, pushing that out. And then we work closely with residential healthcare facilities in the state of North Carolina. These facilities, so long-term care facilities, adult care homes, short-term rehab facilities, are required to report to local public health if they have two or more staff or residents who test positive for flu. That meets the definition of an outbreak of flu in those facilities. And so our communicable disease nurses then speak with typically the director of nursing or the infection prevention nurse at these facilities to assess the situation, to give them guidance on how to, how to control the outbreak in their facility. But early reporting to the local public health is critical to enable us to kind of get in there quick, make guidance so that we can minimize cases and hopefully prevent deaths. And those communicable disease nurses are constantly, they're, they're checking it frequently with the facility, making sure that things are getting under control or do they need additional guidance or support. Until that outbreak ends, they're following up with the facility. So far this flu season, we've had seven flu outbreaks in this type of facilities. Three occurred in December, four in January. Last year, the flu season, we had nine flu outbreaks in facilities, including four in March. So I think people tend to think like, oh, we're getting out of, out of, out of the flu season, but remember, flu season can go until May. So we're, we're hoping for our peak. We're not quite there yet, we don't think. The other group that we really work closely with are our schools. So our school nurses, our childcare facilities and our childcare consultants are very much our eyes and ears on the ground as well. They, they report to us about school absenteeism, is that what they're seeing in terms of symptoms in the students, so that we can support schools in helping to control flu. We can get messages out to parents. I saw one of our staff took a picture the other day, her child goes to a local childcare and there was our fact sheet in the parents folder to pick up. So again, just trying to get messages out to people to promote how to prevent flu and control it. And then I'm gonna turn it over now to Fletch to kind of talk about another thing that we do in order to get prepared for potentially a flu pandemic.
Good evening. I'm gonna briefly discuss how we would actually respond to an influenza pandemic, how we would push that mass prophylaxis out to a large percentage of the community in a short period of time, and what kind of actions would prompt that response from us. So we do that through our POD program, POD in this case being a point of dispensing. Those are predetermined locations geographically dispersed throughout the county where I can send a team, we set up a center of operations to push that mass prophylaxis at a high rate to members of the community. Essentially, that can be initiated through two ways. One, at a local level, where we determine ourselves that our local medical facilities cannot meet the demands of the community, or down, top-down from a federal level, either from ASPR, the Assistant Secretary for Preparedness Response, through Center for Disease Control, through activation of the Strategic National Stockpile, or through Public Health Preparedness and Response. So how that works is we have seven locations determined throughout the community at our county and city high schools. We have these, as you see in the picture, these deployable POD boxes that come equipped with equipment and supplies. So one of my response teams of twenty to thirty people can in a few hours set up this site at a cafeteria or gymnasium and start pushing that prophylaxis. In the case of a flu pandemic, we're doing vaccines, we determine that our rate about for an hour is about three hundred people. So one POD site in the course of twenty-four hours, once it's up to speed, we think we can vaccinate about seven thousand people. And what this does for us, this program, is it helps us meet our public health preparedness core capability eight, which is medical countermeasure dispensing for the jurisdiction. And this falls under a public health all hazards based plan. So in this activation, we're gonna use a couple of our annexes, some examples of those are the High Consequences Pathogen Plan, our Medical Countermeasures Plan and our Pandemic Flu. A couple of weeks ago, on January 26th, we conducted our second annual full-scale POD exercise in partnership with the UNC Eshelman School of Pharmacy at UNCA. We had about seventy participants representing our county preparedness team, my POD managers, our county epidemiology team, school nurses, some of our clinic staff, as well as twenty students from the UNCA School of Pharmacy. Started the morning with a didactic portion. We reviewed the history of pandemics. We're observing the hundred year anniversary of the Spanish flu this year. We talked about kind of how the flu itself shifts and drifts and migrates around the world, and then we had a deep dive into the operations of a POD. In the afternoon, we ran through several iterations of the POD vaccine scenario to maximize experience for everyone. It was a very successful day. We met our three goals, first of which was to familiarize the staff and students with what an emergency response would look like. Second, I was able to train my POD managers in the operations setup and logistics of a POD. And third of all, we were able to establish our baseline throughput for a vaccination style POD, which I mentioned earlier, was about three hundred people per hour with a minimum staff POD. This model we use for the influenza is also the same model we'd be pushing for any kind of public health emergency response, whether that's a shelter in response to a winter storm, radiological disaster, or perhaps even a chemical, biological terrorist attack. It's the same model we'd be pushing out. So we're really happy with the way their exercise went. We're looking forward to continuing our partnership with UNCA into the future and maximize our capacity.
Switching gears a little. Another common wintertime illness that public health addresses is norovirus, which maybe called the stomach bug or incorrectly called the stomach flu. It's not flu. And so norovirus is really common between November and April. It's that acute abdominal pain, nausea, vomiting that comes on fast and goes away within one to three days. And it is highly contagious and very hard to control because it can be resistant. It is resistant to many common disinfectants. So while alcohol-based hand sanitizer is great for most things, it does not work for norovirus. So hand washing, hand washing, hand washing. And because it is so contagious, it can easily rip through a childcare, a school, a, a long-term care facility. And as with flu, these residential healthcare facilities are required to report to us if they get two or more staff or residents who have noralike illness. We work with them and this time we will bring in often our environmental health staff who inspect these facilities. They are checking water temperature, they're checking the disinfectant strength that they're using to again, try to control the outbreak. And so our environmental health staff and our communicable disease nurses work in partnership to address norovirus. And then finally, what talk in Buckham County would be complete without talking about pertussis? So although not specifically a winter illness, it's, it's on everybody's mind because of the recent, still ongoing Henderson County outbreak. As of January 24th, there are up to ninety cases, thankfully seeing a downward trend, but not quite over yet. And amazingly, we have not have any cases associated with that outbreak. We've only had four cases since their outbreak started, none of which were connected to the Henderson County outbreak. But early on in the outbreak, what we did was notify our local health providers, making sure they are aware that there is an outbreak in our, in our surroundings, sending information home to parents in schools where there was some coughing illness going around, saying if, if your kid has these symptoms, please get them to the doctor. Healthcare providers are required by state law to notify local public health when they have a suspected case of pertussis. And our nurses jump on that, conduct a very thorough investigation to determine, does this person meet case definition for pertussis? Make sure they were appropriately treated, appropriately treated and excluded from activities. And then do contact investigation because pertussis is so contagious, we need to make sure that all household contacts and any high-risk close contacts get treated with medication to prevent their illness. So I would say that our, our communicable disease nurses, I, I think of them as like private investigators. They really are great at investigating things, getting to the bottom and helping prevent spread. They work behind the scenes, which I think is one of those things, public health often is sort of taken for granted because you don't always see what we do. But we have really knowledgeable, dedicated staff who are out there every day trying to protect the community's health. So thank you. And again, get vaccinated, wash your hands and stay out when you're sick, which I think many of you have done, so I thank you for that.
All right. Dr. Mullendorf, thank you so much. I know you put a presentation that was, that was perfect.
Turn your mic on, Brownie.
Thank you. All right. Next item is the ambulance service. Have Jerry Beahan with us to explain the proposal.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm asking today for an increase in our ambulance rates and I'll give you the, the reasoning behind the increase. The last time that we had an increase was in 2011. And the reason that we haven't asked for one, Medicare, who is the primary provider of reimbursement, hadn't approved any more funding than what they did in 2011. They recently approved an increase, big increase of two percent. Anyway, that affects what all the insurance companies does, it affects what Medicaid does as well as Medicare. And you have before you what we're currently charging for different types of service that we provide, and we're asking to go up a hundred dollars across the board, with the exception of mileage, and mileage is going up, not a hundred, not a hundred dollars, but anyway, mileage will be going from eight seventy-five per mile up to ten dollars per mile. One other thing that's, that's going up, and this came about after Medicare increased two percent as of the first of the year, where we go out and treat somebody, but we don't transport it. They decide that maybe they don't want to go to the hospital. Or it could be maybe from an overdose and we administer Narcan and they recover and have where they're not going to, they think they're gonna be okay and we don't transport them. Previously, all we could collect was two hundred dollars for that, and we may expand much more in medications. Some of these medications we carry on ambulance are rather expensive. And a lot of times, we don't even recoup our calls, but here recently, like during the latter part of January, Blue Cross was kind of the leader and they decided, well, they would go up to as much as four hundred dollars reimbursement for a treatment, but where we didn't transport. So we're asking to go up to three, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. There's probably five percent of our calls that fall into that category. Oxygen use, you'll notice, is still the same, ten dollars. The reason for that, we can't collect any more than ten dollars. If we did, if we charge more, we'd have to write off more, and that's the same as the reason we haven't been going up since 2011. We built out in FY 2017, just a little over ten million dollars, and during that period of time, we collected about five million dollars. We collected on almost seventy percent of the calls that we made, but we only got about half the money, and that's due to a tremendous amount of write-offs for various reasons. And anyway, we're asking, since we did finally get a little increase from Medicare, where they will approve a little more, then we'd be allowed to go up basically a hundred dollars per call. A little bit on mileage and a treatment, no transport, rate to go up. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
How much were you allowed to go up from?
We can go up any amount we want to. They don't say what it is. You just have to write more off because they only approved increasing, what they approved, two percent.
So they just increased two percent?
They didn't, you know, so that's not a lot of increase. That'll give us roughly about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year increase in revenue.
Doing, doing it this way, Jerry, is they're gonna go up anyway?
Right.
Whether you go up on the rate or not?
Yeah, yeah, Medicare's going, they've already approved that in percent.
Right. So they're gonna go up anyway.
They're gonna go up anyway. The billing company that we use is Reckamendy and a lot of other counties are doing the same thing, that we go up, increase our rate to a hundred dollars to try to recruit, recruit.
If you leave it, if you leave your rate alone, then it turns out that we'd show possibly less loss?
Possibly.
I can understand a lot of that points, but you know, if they're going up by two percent, then it's, two percent, seven hundred to eight, ten is probably a low one than that, but we'll end up showing more loss next year possibly. So you're hoping by charging more, you're gonna get more, basically. You're hoping it's gonna stay at fifty percent?
By what?
You're hoping it's, the write-off's gonna remain back to some, you know, which means you'll get a, you'll get a bump next year.
And it may, they may even go up more in this current calendar year. They go up on calendar years, not necessarily fiscal year.
Can you just talk us through what the additional revenue would be used for to soak people down?
Be used to offset part of the cost of the service with personnel costs or medicine costs or supplies, you know, everything's gone up pretty good amount since 2011.
And the, the service will still, and this will not make it a revenue neutral service. The county will still be subsidizing it, but just.
Which did we subsidize.
require less subsidy than if we leave it in the right time right now.
Does this, the insurance companies, I mean, SAVs, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, that they pay quite a bit more than Medicare would?
In a lot of cases, they do.
So that's, that's a benefit.
Kind of kind of plan somebody had.
But Medicare, Medicaid's locked in.
So they're locked in. They tell us, they give us a charge, yours, how much we'll pay with the type of call.
Right. Period. So don't matter if it's a thousand dollars, you're just gonna get X amount of dollars.
Correct.
And what about mileage, Jerry? What are they doing there?
We charge mileage, they pay so much on mileage also. That's the reason we're going up from.
Ten dollars.
Eight seventy-five to ten dollars.
All right. Thank you.
Jerry, so everybody will understand, if it's, and I, I need to understand too. If I'm a Medicare, you know, person, you, I called ambulance, it's eight hundred and ten dollars, how much does the county get from that?
We get approximately half of that. We'll collect across the board approximately fifty percent of what we actually bill for the time you have all of the write-offs.
And just to be clear, nobody's ever denied a ride in the ambulance if they need it, just so we, everybody?
That's correct. You know, whether or not we collect anything or not, we transport everybody. You know, whether or not we collect anything or not, we transport everybody.
How much, if we approve the change, how much additional revenue would it bring in that nearby would offset that much subsidy?
About $160,000 somewhere around there.
If we approved it, if we approved all the changes?
Correct.
Do you know the percentage you pick up every year that you don't collect anything?
It stays pretty much the same. It doesn't vary that much, but I'll give you some figures.
How many?
Go back and look at it for like five years or whatever you might want.
Where, across the state, where does this put us in allowing counties our size?
I don't know across the state, in the western part of the state, we're being aligned with just about what everybody's charging, and that's pretty, it normally stays fairly close statewide, you know, but I'd have to look at it to make sure.
I'd like to make a question to approve.
Same. Got a question in a second. Why don't we go ahead and take public comment and then bring it back to the board. Thank you very much, Mr. Beehan. We will open this up for public comment. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak? Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. I find it just a little bit concerning that the director here has said that if you put stay the same on the cost, the no-shows getting in ambulance and going to the hospital. If that's true, they've been hyped in this opioid thing to the point that it sounds like we've just run out of control with opioid pickups or not picking up. So if it stayed the same for five years to 10 years, why would we be concerned about opioid pickups? Do you get what I'm saying? It must not be making any difference, in other words, on picking up cost on the opioid side if it stayed the same for all these years, on the ones that don't pay. So it don't seem like there's a problem with opioid pickups. Am I reading this wrong? Hmm, that's amazing, eh? Now, the other piece, the money, is I heard that hospitals putting in money on these ambulances at one point, either operational or money for the medicine or something. So is that money being taken out, and how much is it? And how is that going to be put back in, and just part of how to raise this money up a little bit on all these services too?
Okay. All right, anyone else? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
So I've been very, very busy since you guys have last seen me in November. Shortly after that, I did a cleanup at the heart of Camler, as Mr. John Sutton calls it, with two Inca High School girls. We cleaned up that whole quarter. Everyone was complaining about it, and we went out and did something about it. We also posed a, kind of an invitation to Camler, and above the graffiti, we wrote, "This could be art." Now, since then, it's about two months later, the Shell Station, the station itself has no new graffiti. The whole graffiti that we challenged is now this beautiful piece of artwork. I don't know what it says, but it's pretty to look at, more than it was before, and the trash buildup is at a minimum. This one random act with no funds and two high school girls made a positive impact, and it definitely changed a lot of people in Camler, just one evening. Now, after that, you guys opened up the library board of trustees, which I look at that definition. Basically, what I'm summing up is the library board of trustees is someone that you trust to help handle the funds. You also awarded $300,000 to the Inca Camler Library. How does no one know about this? This is an amazing thing to come to Inca Camler, and I'm excited, just like at the opioid epidemic, the town hall that I went to, and I got to see all of you except Mr. It's a beautiful thing to come to Camler, and more people need to know about it. And I know that there are a lot of applicants, but my professional way of saying, gimme, gimme, please, 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 I know that you guys can trust me for that $300,000 to give resources to Camler. If I did it with no money, something the whole town was complaining about, imagine what myself and all these volunteers that are coming with me, the army behind me in Camler, imagine what good we can do for that. And I don't know if you know my original stance with all of it, it comes back to the opioid epidemic. It may sound like graffiti, it may sound like resources or buses or this, that and the third, but it all comes back to curbing the opioid epidemic. I know that you guys can trust me to give a respect to our community, to you guys to be, what was another one? I'm telling you, you guys do a lot around here, so much. I've been trying to follow. I've seen each of you commissioners at something different, whether it's a Democratic kickoff, which I was myself the first person to register to vote in 28 years, first time in 28 years. Buncombe County was the first one, because I finally found out what you guys do. You make a difference. And as corny as it sounds, and as politician as I may sound, as my daddy calls me, you know, if we want to make a difference, we have to vote. We have to vote, we have to get out there. And I've been doing my best to spread the awareness, spread the word, you know, everything that I could do to help curb it. I hate that buzzer.
Thank you very much.
I would love questions, please, please, please. Any questions, I would be willing to...
We're not going to do that right now. All right. Anybody else? All right, bring it back to the board, Mr. Frye. Yeah, I don't think, doesn't sound like there are. Anybody else want to speak on the ambulance? All right. All right, Commissioners, we've got a motion, a second further discussion. All right, I'll just make a comment. You know, my only comment is, you know, I think I'm going to support the motion. My hope is that in the future, we would maybe do, these are pretty, pretty big increases, but on the other hand, we haven't done any since 2011. So my hope maybe going forward is we do kind of any more frequently, smaller. Anyway, since my comment, I'll support, I'll support the motion.
So I'm going to comment, since the chair has too. I think, you know, I think that's not a, not a, I won't support it also, but that's not a bad idea, that, you know, as we look forward and everything, we might, you know, want to look out over the next five years or 10 years, you know, at this and not have to catch up, you know, just try to, try to keep up with what we...
I think that's a really good suggestion. I'd make the clarification that, like any other healthcare provider, we can only bill what the covered entities allow us. Medicare, Medicaid, and Blue Cross Blue Shield are the only things available. And to Mr. Rice's point, I don't think Mr. Beehan was saying we're not seeing more people. He's saying the percentage of uncovered individuals remains the same. So Medicare has raised the rate, and if Buncombe doesn't raise the rate, it prevents us from asking Medicare to reimburse that rate for that service that every other ambulance in the country now has the opportunity to do for theirs. But I would agree with you. We were a little bit confused even how to bring a rate increase to you all around ambulance because we've never seen one, so I hear your point.
Mr. Farn?
Back to that, the rate, if, if the rate is $400 and they raise it to 500, then we go to 800, we're still above the rate. Is it saying that if their rate was 400 and was at 500, they went to 500, would they, they'd still be paying us? They're not, we're not going out of that rate at all?
What is in front of you are the Medicare-approved rates. They're not above the Medicare-approved rates.
No, we don't get to $800.
But with any insurance claim, you're not going to get the full amount because their administrative fees, there are lot, you know, some claims that are denied, so you're never, I mean, that's typical to the delivery of the service, that you're not going to get the full amount.
I understand that, but it is, it's the question that I asked, Jerry, if we did go up on the rates and we got to 2%, which is not a lot, then we would still be getting the same amount of money for the ambulance run. 2% would go up 2%.
If you don't adopt the rate increase, Jerry can't charge Medicare the new rate.
I agree with that one, then. There you go. That's all I need to hear.
He should jump up if I'm wrong, but I think that's pretty clear.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Beehan, for talking us through that issue.
I think we'll be able to start at probably 90.
All right. Very good. All right, Commission, next item are the board appointments, so let's walk through We've got, let's just, let's just take them as they appear in our packet, we'll do that. Okay. The first one is the Historic Resources Commission. There's two vacancies, we have one.
I'll nominate Valerie Watson.
Got a second, man, if I needed to.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, then we've got the two board adjustments areas. One is for the Asheville Board of Adjustments, and we have two applicants. We were talking earlier about whether to go ahead and make the decision on that this evening or to do interviews. So let's just, let's just, majority rule here, I'd like to just kind of go through, and if you'd like to interview, let's, let's say interview. Majority already knows what you want to say, we'll just vote, but let's, let's just...
Interview, and I feel strongly about that because I don't know either of these people, and it's such an important board.
Okay. Commissioner White says what you're...
I don't know. I'm going to pull my fat lead, so...
I would vote on those, since there's only two.
I prefer to interview. All right, it sounds like we're going to, we'll interview those. All right. And then on the county board of vacancies, there's a bigger pool of vacancies, and there's, our applicants, and there's two vacancies. So we're going to interview for those as well. All right. All right, we have one vacancy on MSD.
Yeah, get up there. I'll nominate Jim Holland.
Second.
I second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you for serving on that important board, Mr. Holland. All right, the, there's vacancies on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. There's seven vacancies, we've got two current applicants.
I'll nominate Rod Nelson and Annie Minks, and bless them to be willing to serve.
It's hard.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I think that this is through all of the boards we need to address this evening.
Library.
Library, thank you, thank you. All right, so there's been some, there's been a proposal that Mr. Holland would work, we have a big pool of applicants here, a lot of interest in the new library board. So there's been a suggestion that they work to identify the geographic diversity of all the applicants and bring back a smaller pool of candidates, which the board would then interview and make selections on, which would be geographically representative of our library system and the county. And Mr. Holland emphasized that if there's any applicants that you, you really, really want to make sure we interview, to let him know, and in that way, those folks will definitely get an interview. So are folks comfortable with that process? And it's just in light of how many applicants we have?
And then maybe if...
How many is that?
Kind of the eight.
We've got five, five spots, right, that need to be filled?
Twenty-six total on this list, which is really good. I mean, we don't, we usually don't get that kind of a response. So I don't know, I don't know the rates.
There's several ways that you could do that if you wanted, because the applicants, you have one from each district, and then you have two at large. You could interview if you wanted by district. You could certainly do that and break that down, and it's really up to your pleasure as to how, what's the most of...
I know, I know we're here by districts, but I always worry at commission level to be that specific two districts in the sense that we're all Buncombe County commissioners, does that make sense? So I think if we could, you know, not, I mean, I can see representation for each district, but interview, get to a number and interview based on that. You know, like if you had at least two from every district and then some are...
I mean, just glancing, I think you could just about do three from each district. There's a lot, and they're, and they're spread out all over the county. We're talking about interviewing now, aren't we?
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
So they sort through the 26, and then, you know...
That wouldn't count, and then how many at large?
Two. Two at large.
So if we did it that way, then you'd interview 12. Three at large, three from each.
Well, we don't necessarily have to have more for the at-large because they can come from any of the districts. So if we interviewed three from each district, we'd have nine people in each district recovered, and whoever else rises to the top would also get some.
Yeah.
So I would say like, you know, I would say like at least two or three from each district, and we're looking at somewhere between eight and 10, somewhere in that, somewhere in that range, kind of to shoot for that. And again, if there's anybody you really want to make sure we interview, just let, let them know and we'll, we'll interview them.
I think you had one coming, and I didn't ask you probably, you might want to. Yes, we did. Sure.
Any other comments on this? We, everybody think this is a good way to move forward?
So did we come up with a number?
Eight to two. Yeah. All right, are you good, Mr. Holland?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, the next item on our agenda is public comment, and folks are welcome to come talk to us about any items that we, unless we've already talked about specifically earlier in the meeting. Are there any folks who'd like to comment? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name's Michael Harney, and I'm a co-founder and operator of what we call the Needle Exchange Program of Asheville. It currently operates out of the office of the Western North Carolina AIDS Project. I also teach Spanish at AB Tech and at Greenwich Community College. So last week, last Tuesday night, and some of you were not there, I hope you're feeling better, Commissioner Belcher asked us to come to the three-minute opportunity to speak before you and to maybe even educate you on some of the issues around the community. In the early days of the Needle Exchange program, if we ever exchanged a thousand needles in a whole year, we thought we were pretty hot snob, to be honest. And last year, with about 418,000 needles, and the year before that, in 2016, we did 512,000 needles. So I brought a packet of information to you, Commissioner Belcher, and that's for your education in it. You'll find a letter from the governor. We had the Deputy Secretary of Health and Services, Mark Benton, come in December and speak to us and listen to us and hear our concerns. The Western North Carolina AIDS Project serves an 18-county region, and yet we had people reporting coming from 32 counties in four states for access to clean needles. I am asking you to really consider becoming the model to the state of North Carolina. Early in the, in the years when Nathan Ramsey was the board chair, and when George Bond was the health director, the health board, Buncombe County Health Board, had a resolution in support of needle exchange. Asheville's been very supportive all over the years, and this has been a great location to be a model for our state. I'm hoping that you will consider tonight making some comments in support of actually operating needle exchange out of our county health department. I would like to see actually that all 85 county health departments across the state take this up. The Needle Exchange Program of Asheville spent about $50,000 supplying needles for all the counties and people that have come from these counties, so it's not that you would have to support that many people, but if we could spread this so that at least all 18 to 20 counties of Western North Carolina would have, you know, maybe 5,000 needles or 10,000 needles or however many, it would really reduce the burden to us locally, it would keep people back home where they might not have to drive long distances to get the access, they could find access to medical care, to safe disposal in the health department, maybe testing for HIV hepatitis, maybe a counselor, all the things that may be available. I would like to hear tonight that you all, each of you, support having the county health department operate needle exchange out of it, and how we can work that out, maybe with the medical director and... the medical director and other health directors in our community. I know Nancy, Nancy County, Diane Cook, I believe is her name, is the health director there, is really looking into it, and there are other counties across the state doing the same. I've opened any questions that you have. I hope the packet will be of interest to you. It was House Bill 972 that legalized needle exchange in 2016, and House Bill 243 in 2017 amended the verbiage that no public funds could be used, but no state funds instead could not be used. That opens it up to county and city. So thank you very much.
May I leave this for you, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, leave it for everybody over here.
Or Jim or Patty, either way, thank you for, thank you for the information.
Yeah, the invite was so you could provide information to us so that we could, you know, make decisions as we move, as we move forward. We won't be making any decisions tonight, but again, I appreciate you coming and encourage everyone to come. Give us their comments. Get three, three minutes when you can, so.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak this evening? Okay. Well, we don't know what she's going to say.
You never know what she's going to say. Talk some one night, I feel special. Speaking on the syringe exchange program, you know, unfortunately, this day and age, we have to accept that syringes are out there as part of what I do. Personally, trained myself and the students that I go out with, it's, it's on the streets, it's everywhere where this man speaks, is the truth. I've never personally chosen that route, but there are others who don't have that support structure. But what I will say, if you don't support wholly what this man has to say, then there definitely needs to be some, some give and take on spreading the awareness, spreading, spreading knowledge. Mountain Energy, Canler, Moon's Corner, I know Mr. Belcher, I know if you know where that is. Well, that's my corner. Mountain Energy was my first job resource. I love those people. They give me apple strudels, you know, they're great people. Well, they have such a needle problem that they have to get the biohazard bands. I'm going there, check on my people. Why is it that nobody knows who to get to come get these syringes? By nobody, I mean, I personally got on the phone for over half an hour. I called the fire stations, I called ADD. I called whomever I thought could help guide me to how we could get this full bin of syringes picked up and empty one of this place because we are in the middle of an opioid epidemic, unfortunately. And the syringe exchange, that's a need contact. And it's taken upon myself to go and spread that knowledge. It definitely is still a barrier between what we think people should do and what we want them to do. And I, I have, I give you my 100% support because that's the day and age we unfortunately live in, but there has to be some give and take everywhere. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Okay, Jim Holland up there, ought to recognize him. He's on the Bay Area Health Board, and he made a motion to do something, they accepted. How about that? That's getting unused on the Bay Health Board, by the way, Jim. We have to write about that one because he did a great job opening up to public. I want to appreciate you all opening this thing up for an interview on this, these two candidates. I want to open your mind, if you don't know, that the Inca partners in Inca on the ball field out there is one of the owners that you're looking at on the interview, and his name is Bill Newell. He also served in 2006 on the planning board for the county, and he, him and his partners were the one that developed and all this property out there at the time that he was on the board. And there's a big article in Mountain Express about this, why was the planning board overloaded with developers? This man should not be put on the board, in my opinion, because he's already served on board. We are re, we, there's a lot of good applicants out here. We don't have to repeat. They're in a big building project around Inca Lake, and that place is out there with his kind of business and his business. So I think it'd be a conflict of interest, in my opinion. So that's, that's, that's it. Now, the opioid crisis. I want you to focus on something. You need some really good help here with Bay Health, maybe, I don't know whether they're the one good or not, but you've got good staff to look in to what we call the substance abuse. Substance abuse has been a big issue with school kids for years. It's been swept under the rug. It's been not even funded or underfunded. And substance abuse is a big, big leader in where they're headed into opioids. Now, if you don't address the biggest issue with substance abuse, what do you think opioid is looking like? So I think that the focus should be around the biggest population of people. Opioid is not the biggest population of people. Substance abuse is. That's what we heard from the doctor today downstairs. We've heard it all through these years about substance abuse. Now, Bay Health has never been funding the substance abuse. The state hasn't funded it, and we're not funding it. Let's talk about the biggest issue, substance abuse. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Colin Bennett, and I'm a resident of the Flat Creek area of North Buncombe County, and I'm also a Buncombe County employee. Let's back up about three years in your mind. On March 9th, 2015, I relayed a concern to the Parks and Recreation Director showing that the county was in violation of state law regarding its ordinance on chapters 50-4 and 54-10 and the illegal posting of signage within county parks. Within four days of sending that email, I received a verbal and written reprimand from my manager, followed by an emailed acknowledgement of such, labeling my concern for the county's illegal posting of parks as, quote, "the use of funds, supplies, or equipment of the county for political or partisan purposes." And we'll just be really clear, letting the county know that it is violating the law is neither political nor partisan. On October 3rd, as you all know, the county updated its personnel ordinance regarding retaliation. So on October 4th, I resubmitted that same request, quote, "in an effort that the aforementioned ordinances and county-wide signage be changed to bring the county back into legal compliance." I asked that the concerns originally brought forth in March of 2015 be addressed swiftly and appropriately. I'm willing and able to discuss this issue with whomever requests my presence or involvement in this matter." Well, that was four months ago, on October 4th. Today, we're at February 5th. So February 5th today, letter to my manager. Please accept this letter as formal notice of my intent to resign from my position as Communication Specialist within Buncombe County Information Technology. My last day in this position will be Friday, February 9th, 2018. I had allowed enough time for this meeting to see if that was ever going to get on the agenda three years down the road. Decision was not an easy one, and I'm truly grateful for the opportunity of having worked within the IT department and served the citizens of Buncombe County over the last three and a half years. Leaving behind the wonderful staff of BCIT will be difficult, as you're all terrific employees, and I'm certain your service to the county will continue henceforth. However, during my leave, I found that the illegal county ordinances I first brought to the county administration in 2015 have yet to be corrected, and Buncombe County remains in blatant violation of state law to the state. As a Buncombe County employee, paid by the citizens of this county and entrusted with the appropriate spending of our citizens' tax dollars, I can no longer sit by idly and be part of an organization that both refuses to comply with statutory law and reprimands its employees for bringing forth such concerns when it is in the administration's best interest to follow the law. If we, Buncombe County, require our citizens to follow established ordinances and laws...
Your time is up.
...we should certainly hold ourselves to at least the same.
Sir, I'm asking you to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the board, gladly answer.
All right. Anyone else? All right, public comment, is there really someone else who wants to speak? Chair is already spoken. All right, I've got a couple of announcements. On February 13th at 10:00 a.m., the Board of Commissioners will hold a special closed session to review direct report employees in room 326 at 200 College Street. On February 13th at 12:30 p.m., the Board of Commissioners will hold a workshop to discuss the FY19 budget in the first floor conference room at 200 College Street. On February 20th at 5:00 p.m., will be the next regular Board of Commission meeting in room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. Is there any need for a closed session this evening, Mr. Crew or Miss Stone? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm adjourned, thank you.